Okay, we're going to call to order the meeting for December 15th. Harahan Council Meeting, Madam Clerk.
Please stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, free, democratic, and just.
Roll call, Councilman Azbilla is absent. Councilman Buddy?
Present.
Councilman Chatelain?
Present.
Councilman Johnston?
Present.
Councilman Wheeler?
Present.
Mayor Bodier?
Present.
Police Chief Walker?
Yeah.
Fire Chief St. Sears absent. Finance Director Todd Turney on.
Present.
City Attorney Scott Sandsberry?
Present.
Myself, Carrie Houston Clerk, present. Mayor's announcements.
Do you have any amendments?
What's that?
Do you have any amendments? This is...
Are we good? All right, so it's going to be, you know, there's some change coming next year. We've got a brand-new council coming in with some new council members, and this year, I'm going to lose two important people to me, my friends. We have been through a lot, a lot, a lot to go. You know what I mean? And we have gone through a lot of challenges, and we've become great friends, and we stayed, you know, civil through it all, and I think we came out so much better in the end. And Craig, thank you so much. You are rock. You always stood by me, and you know how much you meant to me. So, I just got y'all a little ward, and I just wanted to say thank you all, just for your years of service. And Carrie, this is yours. And it just says, "Carrie Wheeler, in recognition for your eight years of commitment and dedication to the city of Harahan," and it's your years. I'm trying not to be too choked up.
She gave us more than eight years.
Yeah. She's going to probably give us more than eight years, for sure. And again, Craig, thank you so much for your eight years of dedication. Thank you so much, Father. Well, always keep in a loop, I mean, we'll miss you on the dais, but we won't miss you because we're going to make sure y'all stay involved. You've been such a great asset to the city, and you know, we have become incredible friends, and I'm never going to let that go. So, thank you so much.
Appreciate it.
Anything else?
That's it.
Special presentation, Chief Walker, current State of the Harahan Police Department.
Good evening, Tim Walker, Harahan Police Chief. Mayor, Council, hearing public. Harahan, Christopher Ray will roll this Saturday at 12:00 noon, starting on Jefferson Highway and Hickory, the conventional route, Jefferson Highway West, Two Falls Avenue. We have an abundance of people participating. I know there's been some talk about bad weather. I checked the weather this afternoon. It looks like it might not be that bad with play here, but we still plan on rolling at 12:00 noon. The latter part of '13, the previous elected chief left office. I ran for office. I got elected mayor '14. I served about seven months of that term. I got re-elected twice after that. We've kept the city safe. We've been one of the top safest cities in the state for the last eight and a half years. We're currently the number-one safest city in the state. We've kept you, your families, your property, and your businesses safe. One of the other things I'm very pleased to note is that our police personnel have been safe over the years. We've had some minor incidents, but nobody's been extremely hurt or killed, thank God. Wish everybody, also, people live here because it's a safe city. I get that all the time, and things should continue. And I thank you all. Have a Merry Christmas, and a safe and happy New Year.
Chief, thank you very much for your service. We really appreciate it. We know this is not an easy job sometimes.
Yes, thank you.
I'd like to take a minute to thank the chief, too. Not only has he been a police chief for the last eight, almost nine years, eight and a half years, he served on the council twice. He's done a lot for this city. I mean, we don't always see eye to eye, but he is a guy I could say, when he makes the decision to do something, he feels is the best decision he can make for Harahan. I think everybody up here makes that same decision when we make every decision we make for Harahan. Like I said, we don't always agree with everybody's decision, but I believe he's a dedicated man. He did his time. He put in above and beyond to the city of Harahan, and I'd just like to thank him. As for Craig and Carrie, hope they come back.
Yeah. So, Mayor, if I could make a motion to amend the agenda to add new business number two, a request for a private party by Byron Viragamo.
New business?
Second.
New business, number two.
So, we have a motion on the floor by Councilman Wheeler to add new business number two. We'll open for the vote. Anyone coming, I mean, open for public hearing, I'm sorry. Anyone want to speak? No one coming forth. We'll now close public hearing. We have a second by Councilman Buddy, all in favor.
Yeah.
Five yeas, zero nays. Agenda is amended.
Four yeas.
I'm sorry, four yeas.
One absence.
Four yeas, zero nays, one absence. Is that it?
And do you want to go ahead and take up Serge, since he's here now?
Yeah, we can go ahead and bring Serge. You want to go ahead and, we can bring Serge up right now before we get into...
Under special presentation, number two.
So, we have a motion by Councilman Wheeler to add Serge Villanova in special presentations, number two. We'll now open for public hearing. No one coming forth. That'll be seconded by Craig Johnson, all in favor.
Yeah.
Four yeas, zero nays, one absence.
Appreciate that. How are y'all doing? Serge Villanova, 53 Rand Pass Avenue, together with the city of Harahan. We produced the Harahan Music Festival and Food Drive, going on its third year this coming May. And today, I just wanted to loosely float a date for that. We set a date in motion. It really helps me kind of sink my teeth into some of the planning. And for that, we did it, we had Amanda Shaw last year. We've raised about 4,000 items of food since we started in 2021, and this May, we hope to do 6,000 items of food, 10,000 items for the first three years. So, my date was Saturday, May 27th, and the biggest question I have is if, at this point, is there an inclination that there's going to be any Memorial Day festivities that weekend? That is the Saturday, the 27th is the Saturday leading up to Memorial Day, and I didn't know if perhaps there was a parade in the works.
Not as of yet, but thank you for bringing it up, because if, and if we start to have that, it probably won't have that conversation until beginning of next year, and maybe we can just move around you one way or the other. We'll figure it out.
Absolutely, and I'll double-check on that. Now, secondly, I just wanted to follow up on an idea I introduced in October to the council about getting rid of or augmenting some wooden posts that are directly in front of Zerang Park, in front of the shelter. I think in October, we maybe said, Mr. Ferrera could possibly assist us with that. I know it's been a busy two months. I know the city has other plans, has a lot of plans for the area. This doesn't really have anything to do with that, you know? It's something I see every day, and I'd like them removed, honestly. I think it'd be a small but significant step to making a more pleasant aesthetic on Hickory Avenue for everyone that drives past it, lives on it, or produces events near it, specifically me. And I was hoping perhaps today we can map out a plan to at least start to investigate that.
We'll get on, we'll map it out. We just, you know, was, we had to run it in the election cycle, you know, and then trying, everybody's trying to catch back up right now. But we'll get on it. I'll make sure that Mr. Call and I are aware of it, and we'll try to see what we can move up and come with logistics and trying to get it down.
We met with engineers today about a drainage project that could be happening right there. So, I think we need to slow that before we do anything. We don't want to waste money twice, so...
I completely understand.
So, let's wait and see what this drainage project looks like, and then we'll decide on how we're going to move from there. I think we all want the aesthetics, but the drainage right there is a major issue, so we need to address that at the same time.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
All right.
Counselor?
Thank you.
Y'all did meet with them people. I didn't meet with them, that's what I'm saying.
As we come in, I'll share, I'll bring you in next time we have a drainage meeting early next year, kind of show you an idea of what we're doing, so maybe you can kind of start to plan around what we got planned. And hopefully, but our plan's probably a year and a work, but it's going to be turning that into an entire green park. And so, it's a big initiative, and it's the start of what we ultimately want the park to be, so it's a good deal for us and the city of Harahan, and it'd be even a better deal for you, because you'll have a first-rate venue that is completely green and aesthetically unbelievable.
But it's a major drainage issue right there, which needs to be addressed.
I appreciate that.
You got it.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. All right, Madam Clerk.
Approval of minutes, reading of the minutes of the council meeting on November 20, 2022. I don't know what that is.
Can I get a motion on the floor to, a motion to...
Dismiss.
Okay, can I motion on the floor by Councilman Wheeler to dispense with the reading of the minutes? We'll open for public hearing. No one coming forth. We'll now close public hearing. We have a second by Councilman Johnson, all in favor.
Yeah.
Four yeas, zero nays, one absent.
Approval of the minutes of the council meeting on November 10th, 2022.
We have a motion on the floor by Councilman Johnson, approve those minutes. We'll now open for public hearing. No one coming forth. We'll now close public hearing. We have a second by Councilman Wheeler, all in favor.
Yeah.
Four yeas, zero nays, one absent.
Communications, reading of the minutes of the special meeting on November 28th, 2022.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor by Councilman Wheeler, approving of those minutes. We're now open for public hearing. No one coming forth. We'll now close public hearing. We have a second by Councilman Johnson, all in favor.
Yeah.
Four yeas, zero nays, one absent.
Approval of the minutes of the special meeting on November 28th, 2022.
We have a motion on the floor by Councilman Johnson to approve those minutes. We're now open for public hearing. No one coming forth. We'll now close public hearing. We have a second by Councilman Wheeler, all in favor.
Yeah.
Four yeas, zero nays, one absent.
No resolutions, ordinances for approval. Proposed ordinance number 2022-20. The following ordinance was proposed by Councilman Chatelain and seconded by Councilman Azbilla, and ordinance amending, ordinance number 1925, the annual budget of revenues and expenditures for the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2022, for the Capital Project Fund of the City of Harahan, Louisiana, for the fitness court.
Okay, y'all at all in the favor, deferring?
I'm in favor.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor by Councilman Johnson to defer the vote on proposed ordinance number 2022-20. We have a second by, we can now open for public hearing. No one coming forth. We'll now close public hearing. We have a second by Councilman Wheeler, all in favor for the furl?
Yeah.
Four yeas, zero nays, one absence.
Can we basically do a deferral on everything in one?
We can, but I need one ordinance voted on tonight.
So, but we're deferring it to, do we call the special meeting first?
Yeah, that's another thing. We might want to amend the agenda to add new business for the special...
Well, we'll probably need to take that up now.
Yeah, I would think so, yeah.
So, unfortunately, since Councilman Azbilla is absent, he had requested, we have quite a few number of ordinances that are going to affect not only this budget for amendment 2022, also adopting 2023, along with a few other ones. So, at his request, he had asked that we defer, we're going to call for a special meeting next Tuesday, December 20th, at 6:00 p.m., where we're going to take up all but one ordinance that we do, my understanding, needs some urgency now that needs to be voted on at this meeting regarding Lift Station 8. So, if everybody's okay, we can call for the special meeting for Tuesday, December 20th, at 6:00 p.m.
Do we have to vote on that, Scott?
I'll vote to the agenda.
Okay.
Vote to take it up.
So, we have a motion on...
So, I need to make a motion at this point to add...
New business.
New business.
And then make a motion to move it up.
Okay, so a motion on the floor by Councilman Wheeler to add new business, special meeting on December 20th at 6:00 p.m., and we're now open for public hearing. No one coming forth. We have a second by Councilman Johnson, all in favor to add to the agenda?
Yeah.
Four yeas, zero nays, one absence. And now, we have a motion on the floor by Councilman Johnson to bring that new business to now. And we're now open for public hearing. No one coming to speak forth. We're now closed, second by Councilman Wheeler, all in favor.
Yeah.
Four yeas, zero nays. We'll now take up new business number three, special meeting. So, Councilman Wheeler?
So, can I, I apologize about that. So, now that the special meeting has been set for Tuesday, December 20th, at 6:00 p.m., like I said, we're going to just defer all these ordinances except for one. We all want to be present, and we want to request, we want to honor Councilman Azbilla's request.
He had a family medical emergency.
It was unfortunate, so... So, ordinance number 2022-20, I would like to defer to the special meeting scheduled for December 20th at 6:00 p.m.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor by Councilman Wheeler to defer ordinance 2022-20.
Can we list all the ones we defer right now?
Can we do them in global?
Just go.
Each one?
All right, and so we're now open for public hearing. Now, public hearing is closed, second by Councilman Johnson, all in favor.
Yeah.
Four yeas, zero nays, one absence. 2022-20 is deferred. Madam Clerk.
Proposed ordinance number 2022-24. The following ordinance was proposed by Councilman Azbilla and seconded by Councilman Johnston, an ordinance adopting the following policies for the city of Harahan, Louisiana, as recommended by the Louisiana Legislative Auditor for bank reconciliations, budgeting, card, contracting, debt service, ethics, payroll, purchasing, disbursements, sexual harassment, and travel expense reimbursement.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor by Councilman Johnson to defer proposed ordinance 2022-24. We're now open for public hearing. No one coming forth.
Defer to the special meeting.
Oh, I'm sorry?
Defer to the special meeting.
Yeah, defer to the special meeting on December 20th at 6:00 p.m. No one coming forth. We have a second by Councilman Wheeler, all in favor.
Yeah.
Four yeas, zero nays, one absent.
The following ordinance, I'm sorry, proposed ordinance number 2022-28. The following ordinance was proposed by Councilman Wheeler and seconded by Councilman...
I'll take it.
Johnston, an ordinance providing that the Harahan Municipal Code be supplemented to fix the amount of compensation of the elected public officials of the city of Harahan as required by LRS 33404.1.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor by Councilman Wheeler to add to a proposed, add to a new, add to the special meeting agenda on December 20th at 6:00 p.m. We're now open for public hearing. No one coming forth. We have a second by Councilman Johnson, all in favor.
Yeah.
Four yeas, zero nays, one absence.
Proposed ordinance number 2022-29, and the following ordinance was proposed by Councilman Chatelain and seconded by Councilman...
I'll take it.
Johnston, an ordinance authorizing the city of Harahan to use $327,250 of ARPA funds to rehabilitate Lift Station 8.
Okay, so this is an ordinance I asked to actually be read and voted on tonight because we got notice today that one of the pumps in Lift Station 8 is on its last leg, and then once one goes down, the second will run nonstop and won't last very long. This is the bypass pump that you see on Ninth Street, and we really like to have that bypass pump there without using it, so we want to start really moving on getting this project done. The great part about having this money, that Lift Station 8, which is our main lift station, will, will be a full and complete overhaul. It's the main lift station, and it'll be brand-new from top to bottom, and that's incredible. And I do want to thank Councilman Banano for covering the other half of this lift station. It's been, it's been incredible for someone to come in and help Harahan with $330,000 like that. So, it's been awesome to work with Council Banano and all the Jefferson Parish staff. So, we have a motion on the floor by Councilman Wheeler to approve proposed ordinance number 2022-29. We're now open for public hearing. No one coming forth. We have a second by Councilman Johnson, all in favor.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, five, four yeas, zero nays, one absence.
Proposed ordinance number 2022-31. The following ordinance was proposed by Councilman Wheeler and seconded by Councilman...
I'll take it.
Johnston, an ordinance providing that the Harahan Municipal Code be supplemented to fix the amount of compensation of the municipal officer of the city of Harahan as required by LRS 33381A.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor by Councilman Wheeler to defer. We're now open for public hearing. No one coming forth, and we're deferring that again to the special meeting on December 20th at 6:00 p.m. No one coming forth. We'll close public hearing. We have a second by Councilman Johnson, all in favor for the furl?
Yeah.
Four yeas, zero nays, one absence.
Proposed ordinance number 2022-32. The following ordinance was proposed by Councilman Wheeler and seconded by Councilman...
I'll take it.
Johnston, an ordinance amending, ordinance number 1925, the annual budget of revenues and expenditures for the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2022, for the city of Harahan, Louisiana.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor by Councilman Wheeler to defer 2022-32 to the December 20th meeting at 6:00 p.m. We're now open for public hearing. No one coming forth. We have a second by Councilman Johnson for the furl, all in favor?
Yeah.
Four yeas, zero nays, one absence.
Proposed ordinance number 2022-33. The following ordinance was proposed by Councilman Wheeler and seconded by Councilman...
I'll take it.
Johnston, an ordinance adopting the annual budget of revenue and expenditures for the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2023, for the city of Harahan, Louisiana.
We have a motion on the floor by Councilman Wheeler to defer proposed ordinance 2022-33 to the December 20th meeting at 6:00 p.m. We're now open for public hearing. No one coming forth. We'll now close public hearing. We have a second by Councilman Johnson, all in favor.
Yeah.
Four yeas, zero nays, one absence.
Proposed ordinance number 2022-34. The following ordinance was proposed by Councilman Azbilla and seconded by Councilman...
I'll take it.
Johnston, an ordinance amending the Harahan Code of ordinances, section 14-164, work not requiring a building permit relative to building permit for sidewalks.
All right, so we have a motion on the floor to defer proposed ordinance number, what is it again, 2022? 2022-34 by Councilman Wheeler. We're now open for public hearing. No one coming forth. We'll now close public hearing. We have a second by Councilman Johnson for the furl of till the May meeting, I'm sorry, till the December 20th at 6:00 p.m. meeting. I don't know why I want to say that.
Like, whoa, what's going on?
All in favor?
Yeah.
Four yeas, zero nays, one absent. Ordinance is deferred. Madam Clerk, ordinances for introduction?
There are no ordinances for introduction. Old business, old business number one, board of adjustment dismissal and appointments.
Okay, I believe we have none at this time.
Defer to the next regular council meeting.
We'll defer to the special meeting, December 20th.
Not special meeting, the next, the next council meeting.
We'll defer to the first council meeting in January. Madam Clerk.
New business, new business number one, Todd Turney on Finance Director, monthly financials with budget to actual comparisons.
Good evening, Council. So, we'll give just a brief update from the finance team. So, we have a number of ordinances that are deferred this evening, so we'll be prepared at the meeting next week to answer any questions and present information as necessary at that meeting next week. Just a few other items that the finance team is working on. We have just begun the process of the annual closeout for the books as of December 31st, even though it's not December 31st yet. We've kind of started that process internally with some conversations with the, with the finance team. We've begun initial conversations with the external auditors as well, scheduling things like that for the, for the annual audit to take place in early 2023. And then the last update, we, we don't have the actual breakdown of the, of the sales tax funds, but we did receive the sales tax deposit in December, yesterday or today, and the sales tax receipts continue to be high. Maybe not as high as the prior month, but continue to be higher than expectations. But we don't have that breakdown yet from the tax collector. So, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that the council members may have.
I think we're good right now. Yep. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
New business number two, I have a letter from Byron Viragamo, who resides at 726 Randolph Avenue. He is requesting a motion to be added to the city council agenda granting permission to host and perform the following. A private party located in Royal Land Park, which will be leased out through the city on the date of 12/31/2022. A DJ to play from the hours of 5:00 p.m. to 7:30 p.m. A live band to perform from the hours of 7:30 p.m. to 11:30 p.m. Will obtain a police detail.
Okay, so we'll now open to address the council. Anyone who'd like to address the council, please step forward. All right, no one coming forth. We'll now close, address the council. Madam Clerk?
I have a new business.
What's that?
I have a new business for the private party.
Oh.
It's none. It was added on.
That's for the Viragamo, all right, so, I'm sorry, jumped ahead on you on that one. So, any, so now we have, anyone who'd want to discuss the new party for Byron Viragamo, please come forward. No one coming forward. Now, close, address the council, all in favor.
No, wait, wait, let's discuss it.
All right, you want to go ahead?
Please. This runs till 11:30 p.m. Lobby and residential neighborhood. I'm concerned that...
It's Saturday.
I'm sorry.
I'm just worried that this is awfully late at night for some of the residents. I don't know why it has to run that late. I appreciate somebody stepping up to, you know, hold an event, but I don't know if the residents are aware of this. They're not here tonight.
So, my understanding from Byron is if he has not, he is going to contact the residents, that would be directly affected, and I'm assuming those would be the houses right across from Royal Land. He didn't say if he was going to go further down Randolph. He didn't really give me the full radius of who would be notified, but that's what he said. And then we did check into the noise ordinance on Saturday. It's till 11:00, so technically, they're only going 30 minutes over the noise ordinance time.
And you said it's New Year's Eve?
It's New Year's Eve, yes. So, it's going to be a lot of noise already that night, but I had thought myself, too, Mr. Buddy, I thought this 31st was on a Sunday, so I was thinking it was the 10 o'clock, and it was going more over, but it's a Saturday. But my understanding, he said the residents would be notified.
I mean, I understand the concerns, but I mean, New Year's Eve, there's going to be noise outside already.
No, you're right.
I mean, if it was another Sunday, I'd say, we got an issue. New Year's, it's going to be noisy. I don't see a problem. I mean, I do see, they say they're going to have a police detail. We just need to check Kathleen, make sure they get a police detail out there. Other, the only thing they're extending, I mean, what they're trying to do there, I mean, I believe anybody could just rent out the park and do this basically. I mean, they basically looking for the band, basically because they're going to be after the hours of normal sound. I mean, I don't see a problem. I do know they talked about they renting some lights, maybe to put a little extra lighting around there, just because they are expecting a lot of people. It is considered a private party. I mean, I don't think they're looking to run anybody away, but I don't, I don't see a problem with it being it's New Year's Eve.
So, is it, were they looking to get one police?
That's what they requested. They did not. But what do y'all normally like? I'll ask them to get two police officers.
Regardless, yeah.
Yeah, we'll ask them to get two police officers regardless. We'll approve it, yeah.
Do you think there might be any issues at all with providing two police detail?
Would there be an issue, you know, providing two?
Two police detail.
Yeah, I think we'd, like Carrie said, basically?
Just approve it subject to?
Approve it subject to two detailed officers.
Securing two detailed officers.
And the reality is, we've got some pretty big events on New Year's Eve that have no police details.
Yeah. So they're trying to do it right, which is?
Yeah.
Pretty cool.
I would move to approve, just subject to securing two police officers for a detail.
Second.
Okay, so the motion to move to approve securing two detailed officers by Councilman Wheeler, second by Councilman Johnson. All in favor?
Yeah.
Four yays, zero nays, one absent. Thank you, Chief. All right, now we go to address the council?
Address the council.
All right, anyone who wants to come and address the council, please step forward. No one coming forth. We're now close. Address the council. And I do, I would like to recognize Lieutenant Adam Peterson, Coast Guard 8th District. He's in the audience from Harahan. How you doing? We love when you attend. Come say hi to us. You're awesome. Thanks, man. Yes, sir.
Thank you for the service, too.
I believe the Coast Guard had a little call out today. Coast Guard had a call out today. Think I seen three people in a life raft somewhere.
All right, Madam Clerk, Secretary's report.
Secretary's report for November 2022. Total revenues $785,041. Reports?
Chief Walker. Stats for the month of November 2022. Harahan Police Department, we had 511 calls for service, 10 auto accidents, 57 citations for 87 charges, three patrol requests. Number narcotics arrests were none. Other arrests were 32 for 54 different charges, 17 felony, 18 misdemeanors, 18 city charges, and one traffic. Persons and property crimes, no murders, no rapes, no robberies, no residential burglaries, no non-residential burglaries, no attempted burglaries, no motor vehicle thefts, no attempted motor vehicle thefts. We had non-wastery thefts and five assaults. Again, wish everybody from Harahan Police Department, wish y'all a Merry Christmas and a very safe and happy new year.
Okay, Chief, I mean, that's absent, Councilman Asbill's absent. Councilman Buzzy?
Well, I'd like to comment how much I've appreciated the mentorship, the coaching by Craig and Carrie. This is our last regular council meeting. They've been instrumental in helping me do a better job, and I greatly appreciate it. And more so than that, I appreciate the friendship we've developed over the years. Chief Walker, you've been our police chief for eight years. We're a safe city. Again, we haven't always agreed, but I know you've done, in your mind and your heart, the best for this city. You've done an admirable job, so thank you for your service. And other than that, I'd wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a safe and happy new year.
Come on, Chatelain.
Same thing. Wish you everybody a Happy New Year's, Merry Christmas. We will have another meeting. I believe the chief's not going to be. He has an event going on at night. I believe he's escorting Santa Claus around town. Councilman Buddy said he did his time. He's put in a lot of time to the city. Even before, he was a public service for the city. He was at the dad's club. He was at the playground. He was a lot of places around the city, helped out a lot of ways prior to being an elected official. That's what people of Harahan do. All these people sitting in audit, they're not elected officials. Why are they here? They care. They want to help. Somebody needs something, they're there. And we do appreciate that about our citizens and the people of Harahan, Chief Walker, and come here, learn, run. It's fun, sometimes. But we're not going anywhere, just like Chief said. He'll still be here. He's not going anywhere. And we're all here to help if somebody needs something, you know? We have a few communities around the area, Gretna, West Wego, Algiers, St. Charles Parish. They're going through a difficult time right now. They had a storm hit. Tornadoes hit, messed them up. We're lucky it didn't hit here. That's the only thing stopped them from hitting here, was luck. Let's pray for them guys, reach out. If there's something we could do to help one of them communities that needs something, let's help them out. It's Christmas time, you know? They lost presents. They lost roofs. You know, parents have to worry about getting their families back under a rooftop. You know, they're not going to be able to worry about getting their kids' Christmas presents. Anything the City of Harahan can do to help, we want to be here to help. If y'all know someone that needs something, let us know. We here. Everyone up here, everyone in this room I know is willing to help. And all we need to do is if someone knows somebody that needs something, let us know. We'll be there. Thank you. Appreciate everything everybody does.
Councilman Johnson?
I'm going to save my farewells for the special meeting, but I just wanted to say a Merry Christmas, Happy New Year.
Councilman Wheeler?
Don't. Go ahead. Let loose.
I'm not even looking at her.
She got one more.
I'm grateful I have one more. Sorry, Jason. Look, it's been a great eight years. That's all I can say. I'm going to miss it terribly. And I'm? I want to thank my husband, my kids, my family, my friends, the relationships I have built here. I can't even fathom that eight years of my life has come and gone. And I'm not going anywhere. Hopefully, I'll be back. But you know what? I really want to thank the citizens for giving me the honor and the privilege to serve this city. I never realized. I remember Tim and Eric came to my house, and their first thing was, you need to get into politics. And I said, oh, no. No, no.
Like, we need her.
I had my reservations, and those were that through eight years. The first years were very, first four years were a little trying, you know? And it's been a total change. I wish I had more time. I think a lot of us wish we had more time. I know Craig and I, we came in, Chief, we're all in the same rotation. But fortunately, yes, we do have another meeting next week. I will say my final farewells. I will totally cry again. That's just what I do. But again, thank you, and have a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
It's been a heck of a four, a heck of four years. You know, I mean, we got Zeta, we got Ida, we got COVID. These two actually stood, and four years prior to me, that with Hurricane Tina. And it was pretty tough. I mean, we've been through a lot. And we've gained a friendship that's been incredible. And I don't know, I'm going to miss them, but I know they're my friends and they're always close to me. But like Councilman Chatelain said, I enjoy this city. We love this city. We all work hard for the city. I love my job. I know they love their job. And we're going to do everything we can to keep them in the loop and continue, you know, to have their expertise and knowledge and friendship with us. But we've triumphed a lot this year. I mean, we turned in a budget better than any legislative staff, any staff here has ever done. The best budget the city's ever had was this year. You know, we battled through so many things coming out of COVID. We gained businesses, didn't lose them. We have created, we're breaking sales tax records every single month. That's because of what we've done and how well we've been able to work together up here. I know the new council coming in will have the same camaraderie, but it'll take a little time to get used to some of their, you know, opinions. And, but it's been wonderful, and I love my job, and I love serving with Councilman Wheeler and Councilman Johnson. I love the City of Harahan, and I know they love serving.